Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pro Tem Sampe, for leading us in the pledge. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann, present.
Councilwoman Hart.
Here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Okay, well, to start us off tonight, we do have three special announcements and presentations, and batting leadoff is going to be my colleague on council, Councilwoman Rukowski.
Well, thank you, Council President. I am just so happy here to be standing in front of all of you during Anti-Bullying Month and having the opportunity to recognize two outstanding students that were caught doing something incredibly kind. Now, if you can recall, last council meeting, we were, I was asking for people to help me hunt down these little girls or little humans and find out who they were, because it turns out that they were students at Adams Middle School, and adult found them helping someone. And this individual ended up being somebody who requires electric mobility device, right? So, the electric wheelchair. Now, I don't know if any of you have ever had the pleasure of having to try to move one on your own, but can you only imagine two middle schoolers trying to do that? So, it is my pleasure to invite up a few different individuals. First, I'd like to invite up Mr. Matt Seo. He's the principal from Adams Middle School. And lastly, but certainly not least, I think Mr. Seo and I would both be very happy to invite Beebe and Marley Tolman up to be recognized. Now, this is one of the rare instances where both sides of my life collide, because I got home from the council meeting and they had finally found the young women who are responsible for being kind, and I wasn't, I was shocked, but I wasn't surprised to see Beebe, who was actually one of my students, being one of the people responsible for helping this woman when she was stranded. So, at this point, I would like to offer Mr. Seo an opportunity to say something if he'd like.
Thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here at City Hall in this meeting, so thank you, everybody. But I just want to, again, congratulate these two young ladies for doing, going above and beyond what we would expect from a middle schooler. If you've ever been around middle schoolers, you know what I'm talking about. But these two individuals are amazing and really show the quality that we try and teach at Adams Middle School and the type of quality that Ms. Rukowski expects from her students, too. So, again, congratulations.
A round of applause, certainly. You know, far too often now, I don't even go on Facebook that much, and I was so happy that when I actually went on social media, I saw something amazing that had happened. So, I was hoping that I could invite my colleagues and Mayor Coleman, if you would be so kind to come on down, and we could get a picture together with these wonderful young women and, you know, let them have a moment of recognition from their community and a community that's proud of them, but also let their actions kind of guide us as to how to continue to be kind neighbors to one another. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I appreciate you.
One, two, one.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, a really great job by two outstanding young ladies here in our community.
So, congratulations and thank you for being outstanding young ladies and helping someone out in their time of need. Next, we will have our second of our three special announcements and presentations with a legislative update from our county commissioner, Glenn Anderson.
Thank you to the full council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and just wanted to announce one thing that's always been important to me is to recognize our veterans. And I did this multiple years when I was in the state senate, and this is the first time I've been able to get it going again since I've been on the commission. But it's a free Veterans Day movie. It's at the Phoenix Theater at Six Mile in New Bird. Beautiful little theater. They've got actually two or three individual theaters within the building, and it's totally free, popcorn and pop included, a great movie. The latest of the Tom Cruise movies about the Air Force. I haven't seen it yet, myself even, but it's, it came out late last fall, and it's, they've got the incredible sound system in that theater now and extra comfortable chairs. And I just wanted to be here to mention everyone in viewing that views this here in Westland, and it'll be on November 11th, of course, Veterans Day, but it's not until 1:00 in the afternoon. It may be 15 minutes or so later than that to give people the time to get there from something they might be attending in the community. I know there's a service or a memorial at the park behind the library that takes place every year, and I think that's going to be at noon. I believe that's going to be at noon this year. And, pardon me?
11:00.
Oh, 11:00. 11:00. And so, this is not until 1:00, and so, everyone should be able to make it, have plenty of time. It should be a really good event. In the years past, it's really heartwarming to see our veterans, a lot of them that can barely get in there, and to see them, and it's just, and have them express the appreciation for being recognized. And I'm looking forward to it. We're hoping to get at least 200 veterans and their guests. I guess I should back up a little and say veterans can bring one guest, and there's no charge for either one of them. And we'll have a goodie bag as they leave with some information that should help them apply for benefits and that. The only other thing I have really is Wayne Road Project looks like it's getting very close. I don't know what the city's been told, but I've been, they're still saying it could be until late November. I think I go over there every week and check out to see the progress that's being made, and it's, so much progress has been made. They're doing, looks like just the last little bits, and that I would, I would think by three weeks that it'll be open. And I know everybody very happy. We live so close to there, that was one of our main routes, my main route to go downtown for my meetings downtown, so I know it'll make a big difference to a lot of people. The delays have been horrendous, and, but the bridge is just fantastic looking. And there's a great sidewalk on the west side of the bridge that's very safely set up to prevent any cars from crossing over onto the sidewalk, and it should be very smooth operating process to get it opened up and the cars to get used to it. I'm a little concerned about how much traffic speeding is going to go on, because I guess people are going to get so excited about going there for the first time and crossing that bridge, but it's, it should be really a great experience and much easier for people to commute. But anyway, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I have some of these. I'm going to leave them out front in the little rack and be putting them in the library, and there's a QR code that if they scan that, they can go right on there and sign up for our veterans, and we ask for their name and their contact information, so when we come down to the, to a few days before, we'll send a little reminder out. But anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. And the third of three, but certainly not the least of three, is going to be a presentation from Brian Schwazing and our Westland Professional Firefighters, Local 1279.
Thank you, guys, for letting us get up and talk. The last time I stood before you guys, I was talking about filling the boot, those two dates in August at the Wayne and Ford Road, and how important it is to us filling the boot for those kids with special needs and how much progress they've made with the money that we donate. And I talked about our goal was beating Grand Rapids. So, within the two weekends, the six days that we filled the boot, we came up with $36,850. So, we're just going to round it up to $37,000. That is our largest total since I've been here. I don't think we've ever had a bigger year. So, a special thank you to Chief Stamper and the city for allowing us or helping us and encouraging us to fill the boot. A huge thank you to the citizens that drove through, giving multiple times, and it always makes me laugh, some of the most beat up cars give the largest amounts of money. I brought a friend with me here. This is Stacy. She is our MDA representative, so she helps me coordinate and keep me on schedule for getting our events out on time, and so, she's going to say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what he said. Thank you, guys, so much. It's not only the local and the firefighters, but it is the entire community, so thank you for letting them collect on duty at intersections. They are very determined to be number one in the state, and with that total, there's no way that anyone will come close to that. And I just wanted to also say, as someone, I work with firefighters in Michigan, Indiana, and Kentucky, and I can confidently say you guys have a department that goes above and beyond, and it is not just standing there with a boot in their hand. I've seen it in action multiple times, helping the community. We have over 9,000 individuals in the state that live with neuromuscular disease. One of our ambassadors does live in Westland. She is actually on the west side of the state doing a drug trial, otherwise she would have been here tonight, and they all helped make it happen and have been really helpful for April. So, I just want to say thank you, guys, and also thank you to the local.
So, we have a big check that we're going to invite you guys down, maybe take a picture for the presentation.
Chief, do you want to come down?
I don't think you heard yet.
Want to come down, chief? Hey, guys, you want to squeeze in a little bit for me, please?
All right, thank you to our Westland Firefighters, Local 1279.
Really thank you to everybody in the community who stopped and made a donation and filled the boot to help with a record-breaking fundraising number. So, round of applause to everybody in the community and all yourselves out there, too. Thank you for your generous donations. There will be one change to tonight's agenda, just letting everybody know that new business item two on the agenda has been removed. So, if you're looking at your packet or you're looking online at the packet, new business item number two has been removed from the agenda. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. And I will also make, take this time to make one other announcement, that we understand it is election season and campaigns are going on. If my colleagues up here on city council and members of the public could please refrain from campaigning at the dais and at the lectern in mentioning specific candidates or opinions on candidates running for office, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Is there anyone on my left comments on the agenda? Anyone on my right comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there, oh, who's?
Mr. Warren.
Okay, Mr. Warren, go ahead. Yep, we'll get you.
Okay, good evening. Under the consent calendar, item C, what type of equipment are you purchasing? And do these new code officers have trucks, transportation, and things like that to get around and do the job? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, Mr. Statchow.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, police fire department representatives. One quick question, this 49, item's E, the $49,560 per year, what is that money going to be used for? Is it going to be used for improvements in the course or slush fund?
We can get an answer on that one.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Are there any changes to consent calendar?
No.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'd like to request that item C and item E be moved to new business.
There's a motion on the floor to move item C and E to new business. Is there support?
Support.
There's support from Councilman Hart. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
My apologies, it is Madam Clerk. I did not mean the deputy.
Oh, I didn't mean it.
All right, now, back to the consent calendar as amended. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Any other changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held September 15th, 2025. Approval to utilize Sierra Container Group as the official trash and recycling bin supplier for the Department of Sanitation. Approval of purchase to replace 18 computers for the Windows 11 conversion amount not to exceed $19,549.33. Approval of renewal of uniform video service license franchise agreement with DirecTV LLC. Term of agreement shall be for a period of 10 years. Approval of M.DOT contract number 25-5472 for installation of pedestrian countdown signals at 42 intersections citywide. This project is partially funded by a M.DOT grant, federal, excuse me, M.DOT federal grant with the city's obligation of $73,900. Approval of M.DOT contract number 25-5474 for traffic signal modernization along Wayne Road and Hunter Avenue. This project is partially funded by a M.DOT federal grant with the city's obligation of And the last item on the consent calendar is adoption of resolution recognizing October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Westland. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item number one, set public hearing date regarding the proposed DDA plan amendment. The suggested public hearing date is November 17th, 2025.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, support from Councilwoman Rukowski. Director Garza, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Council President, to this honorable body, just that we will be setting this public hearing for the purposes of the proposed DDA plan extension that expires at the end of this year, and we'll be asking for the extension of the DDA into 2055. So, we will have that public hearing on that date for questions, comments from the public and from the council, and also entertain a presentation for the contents of the DDA plan.
Okay, thank you. Director Garza, is there any comments from the maker? Yes, Councilwoman Baumann.
I think this is directed to you, Council President.
Yes.
Would there, will there be a study session on this after we get the plan or anything like that?
Yes, we can, if council would so wish, we can definitely get one set up here quickly.
Okay, that would be, I think it would be good for the public as well as us.
Yep, we can do that, not a problem. Anything else, Councilwoman? Anything from the supporter?
No.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item 1A, formerly consent calendar, item C. Approval of purchase of equipment for four ordinance, four ordinance officers amount not to exceed $15,688.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yeah, real quick, so just reading through the, to answer the question, these are staff members who require a laptop, printer, and charger. That's what these charges are for, according to what was in the supporting documents in the packet. Thank you.
Okay, and is there any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President. No, my motion to move the item was so that the resident could receive clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman.
Just wanted, he had a second part of that question was about vehicles to confirm that these ordinance officers have vehicles as well.
Okay, is there, the administration want to take that with regards to Deputy Mayor Godbout?
Sure. We have not come to council yet with a request for additional vehicles. For the time being, we're going to utilize some older vehicles that we have in the fleet, but the length of time that those may be serviceable is questionable. So, we're doing that evaluation. The first two people have just been hired, so there'll be a training period first, and we have equipment to, with these computers and printers, we'll have equipment to get them started. We've got some existing vehicles that we're going to utilize for the interim period until we get everything finalized.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Godbout. All set?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and did you have? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I don't know who in the administration through the chair wants to take this. So, we're approving the equipment for four new ordinance officers. You just stated two are hired, correct?
That's correct.
So, when do we expect the other two to be hired?
When we identify the other two candidates. And trying to train four people all at once is, with the limited crew that we currently have in the ordinance department, is challenging. So, we're going to hire two, get them onboarded, get them up to speed, and then hire the second two as a result. Probably, my guess is within 60 days or so.
So, within 60 days, we will be seeing two new ordinance officers be hired, then?
Correct, assuming that we find the suitable candidates.
Okay.
The two that we have, that we identified out of the first round of interviews are very well qualified and outstanding individuals, so we look forward to bringing them on first as we, we still try and identify the next two that we want to bring on.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I had heard that there was a large amount of resumes that had been submitted, good candidates, previous ordinance officers, police officers, so just curious where we stand with that. We have not gotten any updates, so thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item 1B, formerly known as consent calendar, item E. Approval of the golf course cell tower lease agreement with STC 5 LLC and Global Signal Exquisitions 3 LLC. Annual rent paid to the city shall increase to $49,560 per year commencing on April 1st, 2026, and increase by 3% every year thereafter.
Is there support? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Council President, I think the question was, where does the revenue go? So, I'll let finance, but I'm pretty sure that it's part of our annualized revenue and part of our budget, anyway. So, that's just part of our annual budget on the income line, but I'll let Devin Adams tell me if I'm wrong.
Director Adams.
Through the chair, thank you, Councilman Hart. You are correct. There is no exact expense attached to this lease contract. Instead, it's revenues that come in, that go into the general fund under lease revenues, which then we, of course, use to then fund all our essential city services. Thank you.
All set, Councilman?
Always.
All right, is there any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President, again. This was a motion to move so that a member of our community, a citizen, could receive some clarity on this item. If I may, though, may I please direct a question through the chair to
Yeah, real quick, so just reading through the, to answer the question, these are staff members who require a laptop, printer, and charger. That's what these charges are for, according to what was in the supporting documents in the packet. Thank you.
Okay, and is there any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President. No, my motion to move the item was so that the resident could receive clarity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, councilman.
Just wanted, he had a second part, that question was about vehicles to confirm that these ordinance officers have vehicles as well.
Okay, is there, the administration want to take that with regards to Deputy Mayor Godbout?
Sure. We have not come to council yet with a request for additional vehicles. For the time being, we're going to utilize some older vehicles that we have in the fleet, but the length of time that those may be serviceable is questionable. So we're doing that evaluation. The first two people have just been hired, so there'll be a training period first, and we have equipment to, with these computers and printers, we'll have equipment to get them started. We've got some existing vehicles that we're going to utilize for the interim period until we get everything finalized.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Godbout. All set?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and did you have? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I don't know who in the administration through the chair wants to take this. So we're approving the equipment for four new ordinance officers. You just stated two are hired, correct?
That's correct.
So when do we expect the other two to be hired?
When we identify the other two candidates. And trying to train four people all at once is, with the limited crew that we currently have in the ordinance department, is challenging. So we're going to hire two, get them onboarded, get them up to speed, and then hire the second two as a result. Probably, my guess is within sixty days or so.
So within sixty days, we will be seeing two new ordinance officers be hired then?
Correct, assuming that we find the suitable candidates.
Okay.
The two that we have, that we identified out of the first round of interviews are very well qualified and outstanding individuals. So we look forward to bringing them on first as we still try and identify the next two that we want to bring on.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I had heard that there was a large amount of resumes that had been submitted, good candidates, previous ordinance officers, police officers. So just curious where we stand with that. We have not gotten any updates, so thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item one B, formerly known as consent calendar item E. Approval of the golf course cell tower lease agreement with STC five LLC and Global Signal Exquisitions three LLC. Annual rent paid to the city shall increase to forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars per year commencing on April first, twenty twenty-six, and increase by three percent every year thereafter.
Is there support? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Council President, I think the question was, where does the revenue go? So I'll let finance, but I'm pretty sure that it's part of our annualized revenue and part of our budget anyway. So that's just part of our annual budget on the income line, but I'll let Devin Adams tell me if I'm wrong.
Director Adams.
Through the chair, thank you, Councilman Hart. You are correct. There is no exact expense attached to this lease contract. Instead, it's revenues that come in that go into the general fund under lease revenues, which then we of course use to then fund all our essential city services. Thank you.
All set, councilman?
All set.
All right, is there any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this was a motion to move so that a member of our community, a citizen could receive some clarity on this item. If I may though, may I please direct a question through the chair to Devin? If he could tell us how long, with an approximation of how long we've had an agreement for the cell tower and what the previous rents have been over time, so that we kind of can get an overview of the impactfulness of having a cellphone tower within the golf course.
Yeah, so this is a renewal of an existing lease. The only thing changes the dollar amount coming to the city. Our previous arrangement that was in place for about twenty years or so with T-Mobile before it was transferred to Crown Castle was about thirty-six thousand dollars annually. So effective April first, two thousand twenty-six, our annual payment to us will be up to almost fifty thousand annually, and then will increase three percent each year thereafter. And it's leasing out space on the existing tower that is currently at the golf course. So right around hole two or three, I believe, so. Hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Baumann.
Can I take one more step to clarify? Because it is in the document that, and I saw it through the chair, just double checking, I'm reading this right, is that when we first signed it, we had nine additional five-year terms we could add to the original agreement? And we are in our fourth one? I think if I read that right, is that, can I get that clarification? Because, because you know, the way I read it is that we basically had up till like fifty, a pretty large amount of year, large number of years that we could actually keep extending this.
Thank you, yes. So this, the contract that's up, or the lease agreement that's up for approval tonight comes with five, or nine separate five-year renewals, taking us all the way to two thousand and fifty-one. And each, each five-year term comes with, you know, negotiation with the city on if it makes sense for us to renew and what the rate should be. But if we decide to exercise all the renewals and get to April one, two thousand and fifty-one, every year we'll receive three percent higher revenue.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All set, Councilwoman? Okay, Councilman Hart, another question?
Thank you, Council President. Just because I have a lot of knowledge in the cellular industry, this is standard. This is a standard grounded tower lease with any MTO, mobile tower operator, but they go into these leases, they're usually long-term. Naturally, it's very expensive for a cell operator to build a new tower, and of course it's troublesome for the community as well. So you'll see these leases, they always set these long terms with a five-year renegotiation with a three percent annual escalator. That's actually industry norm. So in my professional opinion, there's no reason to alarm. I think it's equitable, so, and quite standard for the industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item number three. Approval of bid for Vinoy Palmer Intersection Improvements. Administration recommends awarding contract to R and R Asphalt. Total amount not to exceed, not to exceed one hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifty cents, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Please and thank you. Thank you, Council President. This is one of my often driven intersections. So for those that I probably have the same question, when can we anticipate this being brought to fruition? And about how long can we expect any kind of delay? And do you anticipate any long-term closure of that intersection?
Through the chair, this project is anticipated to start right after they sign the contract, the signs the contract with us. So I, we estimate it in about two to three weeks. And it's a small project, so it should conclude under normal conditions, let me stress, under normal conditions, this construction season. The project will be closed about for two days during the paving process of the intersection. So, because they're going to mill it and then they will resurface it. And they'll only be closed for about two days, and detour routes will be in place for eastbound and for westbound traffic at that intersection. This project includes asphalt resurfacing, high visibility pavement marking, tree planting, sidewalks, and ADA ramp. So it should go quick.
Wonderful. Well, I'm glad to hear that it won't be a long-term thing. Now, you know what you did though, as you said, under normal conditions. So now, I hope you didn't, didn't put a hex on us, but that's certainly an intersection that could use some love within the city. So you obviously have my support. I was pleased to see how quickly this Wayne Road process went. I know that's not necessarily under your purview, but I was, I was greatly surprised. So now we just got to get that branch open, so, thank you.
I'm proud.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. Anything from the supporter?
The only thing I have, if it's okay through the chair, is are there any other constructions happening at that same time?
At that intersection and that area?
Yeah.
We don't have anything as a city that's happening at the same time.
All right, that's, that's one of the big questions, why we do so many at once and not coordinate. I just want to confirm, nothing else over there at that time?
I don't know about Wayne County, Glenn can answer that.
Glenn's like, no.
Don't go into Ramsey, don't go into Glenn. All right, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. My question is just through the chair to Ramsey. On this particular project, I know that the routing is probably not as easy accessible because it's a two-lane. So what's, A, what's the planned route for detour? Are we sending them around where? And then the second thing is, you stated it was a two-day project, which is amazing.
The resurfacing part of it.
Okay.
The resurfacing part of it is three days. We have ADA ramps, we have planting, we have sidewalks, we have all kinds of things there too.
So the.
So just the resurfacing part.
Okay, so the construction's going to go longer than two days?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just to be clear. Okay, now the rerouting will go longer than two days?
Not at all.
Okay.
The detour route will only be there just for the resurfacing portion of that project.
Okay, perfect. And in that being said, are you going to do it during a weekend where it's quite, you know, less busy compared to maybe when people are working?
We don't know that yet. The contractor, I mean, we got a contract with him and he's going to give us a schedule.
Okay, can we make a request? Please?
I don't know if we can, because usually on the weekend, they're going to have to pay overtime for.
Gotcha.
Their workers and.
That's fair.
I don't think they'll agree to that.
I am, I am going to comment too, that Councilwoman Rakowski brought up, whatever you guys did with the Wayne Road project, which I live right there, was fantastic. So the closing, it was on a weekend, so the closing and the, the actual work that was done, it was very quick, very professional, and it seemed to work well. So however it was managed, I'm assuming that, you know, you and your team managed it, however it was managed, that, that project in particular went very smooth.
And this is again, that's the Wayne Road project, and the credit goes to Glenn.
Okay, Glenn. Commissioner Anderson, I'll say to you, thank you so much. Hopefully, hopefully you take the credit for, of course. Kudos to the Wayne Road project then.
Well, we have had pretty good luck with everything since Mayor. But I did notice something that I'm going to get with you tomorrow.
Glenn, what have you? If you want to come up and comment during, not yet, not yet, but during the citizen comment, we'll get you back on there.
I don't have to.
It's fine. But, but perfect. So thank you, Ramsey, just for clarifying about the two days, and we'll, I guess we'll be patient whatever schedule is selected. Thank you.
Great, and just one note from me before we move on here. The big project that they were doing over there in Norwayne with Graham Travers has since been completed, so that was the, I think, the big headache in there. So kudos to Ramsey and his team for coordinating that and getting them done one at a time too. So thank you, Ramsey, appreciate it. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item number four. Confirmation of reappointment of Sam Durany to the Planning Commission for a three-year term effective immediately and to expire October sixth, twenty twenty-eight.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Durany for your continued service. You know, you've been serving the city for decades. You've put in so much of your time, your dedication, your hard work, your expertise in this field. So I just want to thank you so much for continuing to serve the City of Westland. We really appreciate you, Sam. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate being reappointed. I really enjoy the Planning Commission, and I will continue to serve.
Okay, is there any discussion from the maker?
Just a little brief, Council President, if someone with as much experience and time as Sam wants to keep giving, I'll keep taking. So thank you, Sam. So happy to support it.
Any discussion from the supporter?
I just want to echo the sentiments that everyone else said. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. I know you have wealth of knowledge. You helped, helped me along the way in learning the Planning Commission, and I'm pretty sure you're helping the rest of the team there. So thank you for doing what you're doing and stepping up. Thank you.
I want to thank the council for putting their trust in me.
Any other discussion from the council? Yes.
Thank you so much, Sam, for being here. Also, thank you so much for sharing your knowledge with Westland. I know that you guys do a lot of the review before it comes to city council, so you do a lot of the footwork. So I just wanted to thank you for your recommitment to the Planning Commission and working really hard with the Planning Commission to share your, your knowledge, because it's really important to have knowledgeable people that understand planning and the zoning and everything that is brought in for, basically in front of them for, for their review. So thank you so much. We appreciate your recommitment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem Stampy. Any other discussion from the council? I will just say, you know, echo the sentiments of the mayor and my colleagues. You've been on Planning Commission for quite some time. You've probably mentored a lot of people along the way and seen every project under the sun here in the City of Westland. So thank you for your continued service and stepping back up to be reappointed and continuing to share your knowledge with us on the Planning Commission. We greatly appreciate it, Mr. Durany. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business item number five. Confirmation of appointment of Gary Chappell to the Westland P. Fowes Public Library Board to fill an unexpired term effective immediately and to expire August seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Pro Tem Stampy, mayor?
Well, Mr. Chappell, thank you for returning to the Westland Library Board. I know you've had a passion for our library for a long time, previously served on the library board, and with the vacancy, we were, I was, we were happy to appoint you. Thank you again for just taking your time and putting it forth towards the city. Library is really one of the gems of our city. So thank you, Gary, for stepping forward and serving once again. Appreciate you.
I appreciate it, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the library. There's a lot of good things that are going on there, and a lot of things that did go really good back when I was on the board before, and I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chappell. Is there anything from the maker?
No. I'll just say thank you for coming back to the library board.
Thank you.
Anything from the supporter?
Thank you, Mr. Chappell, for coming back. I know you were on previously and you came back. I love the library, and I tell Jennifer all the time, you guys put on amazing programs, so different, and you bring in great speakers, great activities for the kiddos. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate your commitment.
Thanks.
Any other discussion from the council? Mr. Chappell, thank you very much for continuing to serve on the library board. I know this is round number two for you, so we appreciate you stepping back up. Round number three, jeez, round number three. Well, thank you for round number three. You have a lot of institutional knowledge with, just like Sam, with the Planning Commission regarding the operations of the Westland Library Board. So we know it's going to be in good hands with yourself coming back on there and the board and the leadership of Jennifer, so thank you very much. We appreciate you stepping back up.
It takes a team.
It does.
It's a good team over there.
It does, they have a great one. Thank you, Mr. Chappell. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
New business item number six. Confirmation of appointment of Jack Ray to the Downtown Development Authority to fill an unexpired term effective immediately and to expire October first, twenty twenty-seven.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski, mayor?
Well, I just want to take this moment to thank Jake Rea for serving on the DDA. I know he's replacing his father, who served for a long time, who unfortunately, due to health reasons, couldn't continue to serve. But I know his family has a passion for our city. They own a business here in our city, and I just want to thank Jake for taking the time to put his effort and, and passion for our city towards the DDA. So thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And Jake is not able to join us tonight, but is there anything from the maker?
None, council.
Anything from the supporter?
Without knowing Jake well enough to say any, you know, to give any platitudes, I would like to offer his family, you know, a lot of love and respect and, you know, positive energy and prayers to his ailing father, and hope that they receive an outcome that's both, both wanted and at the very least merciful. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other discussion from the council? I will just say to Jake and the Ray family, thank you for your collective continued service here to the Westland community. It's becoming a family tradition on DDA, so we really appreciate the Ray family serving the community and the Downtown Development Authority. So thank you, and if you want to come to the council meeting at some point and be recognized, we'd be happy to do it, but thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. All right, so we will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers should refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public that do not promote civil discourse. Comments shall be directed to the chair and not to the people in the audience. The chair shall call to order any person who is being disorderly by speaking when not having been recognized by the chair or is being disruptive to the proceedings. If any person, after being called to order, continues to be disorderly, creating a public thirteen disturbance, the chair may order that person removed from the meeting immediately. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Dale.
Ruth Dale. Had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. First, I was able to attend the open house at Fire Station Number Two Saturday. Councilpeople McDermott and Baumann and Emily Sun and myself were given a thorough tour by none other than Chief Stamper. And it's an outstanding, I know all of you have been there, outstanding facility. Thanks again, chief. Next signage in my small sixty-nine-year-old sub. I don't know what's going on, but for six, probably sixty-two years roughly, we had one sign in our subdivision, and it was a good one. It says, "Not a park entrance." A few years ago, a neighbor, I don't know what happened, but anyway, now a stop sign was added on Brody as you come out to Bedelt, making a right or left. Recently, meaning this year, somebody's going sign crazy. I don't know who approves all of these, but there are three recent. At Brody, Bedelt, there's a no-through traffic and a big, I don't know what color, yellow, bright yellow, no outlet. And over at the dead end, a sign that reads, an arrow pointing, "This way is Brody, this way is Bedelt." The very latest is a speed limit, twenty-five, and it is hooked on to the "not a park entrance." I'm having a big problem with this one. All these signs basically are, I feel like they're cluttering my environment. And how did our sixty-nine-year-old sub get all these? cluttering my environment. And how did our sixty-nine-year-old sub get all these, get by all these years without the excessive signage? A puzzle. The big issue with the twenty-five miles an hour speed, we have how many curves? Probably six curves. We have the nineteen fifty-six, the narrow streets, and you have excess amount of cars parking on the streets, so narrow, the narrow streets. I'd like to ride with somebody.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Your time is up.
Yeah. Somebody needs to rethink the speed limit sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Well, I can't say what I wanted to say. I got two other questions for you. Who and how do we go about, as Ms. Dale said, get the state to change the legis, the state to change the law for this twenty-five mile an hour speed limit? It needs to be reduced to fifteen, okay? Like she said, we have older subdivisions and the streets are narrower. Second, Chief Dolly, through the chair, Chief Dolly. I was, is my understanding that cars parked and vehicles parked on the street is a police department issue. I have a neighbor who has a business, and he has this big enormous trailer attached to this big enormous truck sitting on the street every day. I can't come through there, and depending on what time of day it is, cars can't come through there. Please check it out, but do it on a time when, you know, normal, she's not at work, because it's, it's a hazard, and it obstructs vision. Second, these speed humps, did y'all put it in y'all budget to get us some different ones, to order some more to come down to South, to the South End? Or, I know they're coming up in October. I know that. So, this year is a dead issue. So, what's going to happen with them?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And I will come and talk to you. I know the trailer you're talking about, because I've been in your neighborhood enough times to see it. So, I will come and talk to you after.
Okay, well, tell, tell me what you're going to do about them speed humps, too.
I'll talk about that.
And tell me whatever information I got to do to get the speed limit reduced from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen, because we got, we got a racetrack.
Okay. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Mr. Warren.
Okay, I just want to talk about the question of the sidewalk rehabilitation in the Carver subdivision. The Department of Public Services missed a lot of rehabilitation areas on, on Middle Belt. He said a Middle Belt. There's still tree roots pushing up sidewalks. There was no markings there. And on Powers, they missed a lot of spots where the sidewalk has risen above two inches. And I think I raised this question before, and they said they were all done, but I would like for the Department of Public Works to come back out there and look at that, so that the job can be complete. Two, the question of the homeowners, which, which I've raised, is that as we entered the holiday season, and I know you're going to have some kind of signage going down Warren, and our, the new streetlights that you put in down in the Middle Belt, they're, they're capable of holding certain signage to alert folks of the neighborhood they're in or the holiday season. So, I want to, I would just like to know what the city has, has in mind to, to, to deal with that, because one of the issues that, well, the main issue is that people are passing through a part of Westland, and they don't even know what it is. And so, the accurate signage would point out to that we're part of the city, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, Ms. Filzetti.
Good evening, guys. First of all, I want to start with saying thank you to Westland Public Library. I've had the privilege of going to a couple events the last couple weeks. I believe the historical, I'm going to get it wrong, Society or Commission did one on genealogy at the public library. And then I just attended a thirty-day writing one yesterday. So, it's been pretty amazing. Sometimes I wish that knowledge was pushed more out there besides just on social media, but it's been great. I want to offer my congratulations to the gentlemen that were appointed to the Planning Commission, Public Library Board, and Downtown Development Authority. Congratulations to them. But I spoke previously, a few months ago, asking about how many open commissions there were, and I haven't received an update. And I see that some of them are being appointed, but I applied to one previously about two months now and have not heard anything. So, if someone would come on and get back with me on how many current opening positions there are on the commissioning board and where I am at, at my application for the historical commission. But thank you for your time, and I hope you have an amazing day.
Thank you, Ms. Filzetti. Is there anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council, and residents, and everybody in attendance tonight. First of all, again, thank you and congratulations to Mr. Durante, Mr. Chappell, and then Mr. Rea for stepping up on the library board and DDA and Planning Commission as well. Thank you again for your service to the city. It certainly takes a lot of time and effort to serve on these boards and commissions, so you are very appreciated by us and our Westland residents. I'd like to congratulate our Westland Police Department for being selected to receive funding from the Community Relations Burn Justice Assistant Grant from the State, Michigan State Police Grants and Community Services Division for the 2026 fiscal year. So, congratulations, Chief, and all of our officers. Of course, we've had a busy couple of weeks in the city. I'd like to thank everyone that organized and attended the POW MIA ceremony at the Bova VFW. I want to thank Commander Rokita for the invitation, and certainly an important occasion in our city every year. And I think the Bova's been doing it for, it's been a long time, forty-something years, I know. So, thank you to the Bova VFW for doing that. We had our multicultural festival at Central City Park. I thought it was a really positive event. I want to thank Director Eazy from our Community Relations Department for organizing it, and to all the performers and vendors, and the food was great. We're going to try to promote this more and grow it, but I want to thank everybody who participated in that as well. And then last weekend, we actually had our Westland Fire Department Fire Prevention Open House at the new Fire Station Number Two, which, again, we're very proud of, our brand-new, beautiful fire station. A couple of years ago, when I was a state representative, this was on the city's wish list to rebuild Fire Station Two. The city had very little funding to do the project at the time. I was very pleased to be able to work with Governor Whitmer, work with former Michigan Speaker of the House Joe Tate, and work with my colleagues in the Michigan House and the Michigan Senate to secure funding, seven million dollars, to rebuild Fire Station Two. And now I'm proud to say as mayor that it is fully operational, and our firefighters are giving me a lot of good feedback. I know the chief is happy with the new station. You got a new office over there, a new training facility, and our firefighters have something they can be really proud of. And I think our residents are really proud of it as well. I saw quite a few residents and their, their families and a lot of kids having a good time at the open house. So, we'll continue to highlight that, and, and we're very proud of the positive things we're doing in our city. So, thank you to everybody who showed up over there. Let's see, the next thing I want to mention is the Halloween Decorating Contest. This contest will run now until midnight on October 31st, Halloween. Residents can nominate themselves or a friend in one or all of three categories: Best Autumn Display, Spookiest Display, and Most Over-the-Top Display. Nominees will be asked to provide a picture along with their submission. Winners will be recognized at the city council meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2025. All participants that don't win will receive certificates for participating in the contest mailed to them. You can nominate decorated houses or vote for your favorite at cityofwestland.com. Westland residents are invited to take part in our no-cost electronic recycling, recycling drop-off day in the parking lot of the Westland Recycle Center at 37137 Marquette on Saturday, October 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For a list of acceptable items, please visit our website, cityofwestland.com. City offices, including the Eighteenth District Court and Recycle Center, will be closed on Monday, October 13th, in observance of Columbus Day. Trash recycling and compost collection will not be affected that week. I'm also pleased to announce that the next stop of the mayor's listening tour will be right here at City Hall on Thursday, October 16th, at 5:30 p.m. Please stop in for an update on city business and bring your questions, concerns, and comments. I'm always happy to hear what our residents have to say. Join us for the Norwayne Harvest Festival on Saturday, October 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. For a day of free family fun, there will be face painting, pony rides, live music, cider, donuts, and more. And I want to thank the Norwayne Community Citizens Council for all of their hard work in getting this beautiful event together. I was, I was there last year. I know some of our council members were there. Some of our city staff were there, too, and it was a great time. So, again, Saturday, October 18th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then, last but not least, I'd just like to announce that the save, to please save the date for our annual trunk-or-treat on Wednesday, October 22nd, at 5:30 p.m. at the Eighteenth District Court parking lot. Kids 12 and under, accompanied by adults and adult, are invited to dress up in their favorite costumes and enjoy trick-or-treating from creatively decorated car trunks. There will be plenty of candy, fun activities, and a safe environment for everyone. Don't miss out on the holiday, Halloween festivities. That's all I got, all I got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Anything from the city attorney's office?
Yes, I'd like to just talk about a procedural issue. The council president, I've had some emails on this, relative to matters on the consent calendar. If there's a simple question that has been raised on the, about an item on the consent calendar under the Roberts rules, you do not have to move it to new business simply to answer the question. It dawned on me tonight when the question was, what's that fifteen thousand for? And you had all had read the package and knew it was for computers. But, so those kind of simple discussions as compared to discussions or debate don't require movement off the consent calendar. It's the council president's choice in that instance, but we haven't really implemented that much. So, I thought it'd be better than just having communicated to the council president and administration, but to the rest of you as well, that there is a mechanism to answer simple questions when they come up from the audience on the consent calendar. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. First, I want to give everyone that got reappointed, Mr. Chappell, thank you for being, coming back and giving your knowledge to the library. Sam, thank you again. Appreciate you as always, and I'm glad to see you still here, working with the city that you love so much. I'm going to give a shout-out to our young football players. The Meters had their homecoming game this weekend, and it was amazing seeing these young men and women out there just enjoying life and showing fellowship in the game of football. I do want to say I'm definitely super happy to see road improvement over down in the Norwayne area, Winona and Palmer area. A lot of good work happening over there and building up that area. So, I'm definitely happy to see those projects are coming to fruition. That area does need it as well. I want to say congratulations to our firefighters, Local 279, for being able to give back to the community and help people in need. I do want to give a shout-out to our CERT team. Seven members of our CERT members went out to do a training, search and rescue. So, I want to say thank you for continuing to volunteer your time to do something that's, you know, amazing for our community, and hopefully we never have to use those skills. But we know that our citizens are ready to step up when we need it. And just want to confirm, I didn't say it, Glenn said it, three weeks. So, so I think a lot of people will be proud to hear that that's coming. That bridge will be opening up soon, and not only our residents, but also the businesses in that area will be definitely proud that it's opening up. And I think that's it. The mayor already brought up all the updates on the events that's happening, and I want to say thank you all for coming out. If you need me, you can always call me at 313-415-4096, or follow me on Facebook, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. And I appreciate everyone here. Thank you.
And Councilman Hornbuckle, we will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. Thank you to all the reappointees, coming-back appointees, and new appointees to our boards and commission. It is always, we're always very grateful to have you, and it's a job, and that is very necessary. Mayor brought up the POW MIA ceremony at the Bova on behalf of the commander, as I as a member over there at the Bova. On behalf of the commander and the leadership team, thank you for coming, Mayor. Thank you for coming, those that did, and everybody else who did. Thank you for coming to that. Moving on to another veteran issue, not an issue, but an announcement. It's that time of year. It is October. The Wayne Ford Civic League is bringing back, of course, its 12th Annual Veteran Meal Program. This is where we provide a full veteran meal for local veterans, very important, that live in Westland and/or Wayne, because we do partner over with Wayne, too, to provide them with a holiday meal. Registration is necessary, not preferred, not encouraged, necessary. Currently, your registrations can be taken on the website at www.wain-ford, that's wain-ford.com. On the main page, you'll see a beautiful eagle graphic. Underneath that graphic is a link to a Google Sheet that you'll be, you will need to fill out and submit. And I see those every day, so do submit them. We're keeping track, and we're counting. Deadline for registration is November 19th, 5:00 p.m., November 19th, 5:00 p.m. Distribution will be November 22nd, starting at 10:00 a.m. and ending at 1:00 p.m. So, I'll say that again. Distribution is November 22nd, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Many of you have been to that program before. A lot of the, I think, all my colleagues here, and the clerk, and I think the mayor's even showed up. A lot of us put the boxes together. It takes all hands to do that. And of course, colleagues, as always, you're, you're invited to attend on behalf of the league to come by and help us put that together. You will be there earlier than 10:00 a.m., though, I will tell you. It's a lot of work. So, we'll put that program on. But again, do register. And I know it's springing this on the mayor, but the mayor's office over the past years, regardless of mayor it was, has always been supportive of the program. So, I'll be working with the mayor and the I.T. department to try and go ahead and get a link to that registration form, not only on the Wayne Ford Civic League page, but also on the City of Westland, as well the City of Wayne page. But if you want to beat us to it, but while we're catching up here, you can just go to www.wain-ford.com again and register. Now, for those of you who aren't veterans, but you want to say thanks to a veteran this holiday season, we also have a donate link. So, when you go to the same page, wain-ford.com, upper right-hand corner, you'll see a donate link. Click that, and it'll give you an opportunity to go ahead and donate to this program. Average cost of meal for a veteran family is forty bucks. So, I don't know if you guys have been to the grocery store lately, but that's what it's costing now for a turkey and stuffing, vegetables, mashed potatoes, gravy, rolls, the whole bang, and then we got to put it in a box and everything else. So, for those of you, I know I can count in three veterans in the room, so I hope I see your registrations here in a day or two. Then, call your friends, let them know as well. So, register early so that you can get on the, on the page. We hope we get overwhelmed, but of course, finances are always finances. That's where the council and everybody else comes in, and you go ahead and support us as well. But do get registered. If you have any questions, you can email me. You can go ahead and send me an email at jhart, and I have a Wayne Ford Civic League email address for this thing, jhart@wayne-ford.com. So, there's that Wayne-Ford. It's a recurring theme, if you haven't noticed. So, for veterans, do register. For those of you wanting to support veterans, there's the link. And thank you, Council President. And thank you, Council President. That'll be it for today.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for allowing me the few moments at the beginning of our meeting to recognize those two outstanding young women. And I just want to, again, thank Bibi and Marley for showing their compassion and caring for those that were truly in a moment of needing, not just empathy, but true compassion. So thank you, girls, for rolling up your sleeves and showing us how to be good neighbors. I'd like to thank all three gentlemen for their continued support on various commissions as an exhausted rooster, isn't that a weird term, of the J.C.s, where we believe that service to humanity is the best work of life. And so those of you that contribute, and I know there's even some more faces in here that contribute on different boards and commissions throughout the city, so to you, we say thank you. It takes all of us to make the city function in a, you know, in a forward progress and wonderful way. So there's lots of questions about sidewalks and speed humps and signs, and then my brain kicked into being a little girl and listening to my mom sing songs while she was cleaning. It was like our Saturday routine. I was on dusting duty, so it was that sign, signs, everywhere the signs, kind of kicked in my head. So I can certainly empathize with maybe the amount of signs that are popping up, so I hope someone, Mr. Mayor, if we could kind of take a look and see who picked that up as a pet project, it's such a tiny little, you know, little community or neighborhood. And so I can, I don't think it's funny, but it kind of gives me the giggles that you probably wake up every day, Ms. Dale, and there's a new sign. So we certainly would like to kind of understand that better. I'm just looking forward to all of the updates that are occurring, especially in the Vinoy Palmer area. I would hope that we don't impede, you know, the children's access to their education, because that's a pretty major thoroughfare for that whole Norwayne community. But other than that, I'm looking forward to donating to the Veteran Meals Program. I'll certainly let my veteran friends know, who are local commissioner, about your movie opportunity on Veterans Day. Thank you very much for honoring them. And then, I would also look forward to, which will happen before Veterans Day, but the October 23rd Music Bingo here at City Hall that proceeds our supporting the Goodfellows of Westland. So we haven't done that as an event, so I'm looking forward to it. I know some folks have talked really highly of Music Bingo, so I think it's going to be a great time, and it's certainly a wonderful and worthy cause. So with that, I would just like to remind everyone, be like Bibi and Marley, and spread joy and love to your neighbors. There certainly is enough trial and tribulation in our daily lives that we don't really need to be contributing to the hurt and sadness of anyone else. So if you can be a good neighbor, please be one, and with that, we'll see you before Halloween. Okay. Good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank everyone for showing up tonight. I know it's the last probably worn day we're getting a little bit, so thank you for spending it here. Also, we talked a lot about veterans. It's the Navy's 250th birthday, October 13th. So happy birthday, Navy. It's been fun, it's amazing. I can't wait to see all the parties happening for it. That's all, Council President.
Okay. And we will now hear from Councilwoman Emily Bowman.
Thank you. First, I actually am going to recognize my husband and my husband, Bill, and our 29th wedding anniversary, which was yesterday. It actually seems crazy to think that it happened 29 years ago, because I feel like it was just yesterday. And as everybody knows, marriage takes work, and I know actually the covenant we made was between us and God, and so that third strand is really where our strength comes from in our marriage, I can tell you that. So happy anniversary, Bill. I don't know if he catches this later, but there's a happy anniversary. Thank you to our community and recognition of our Westland firefighters and their Fill the Boot campaign. Yay, go Westland over Grand Rapids, yay. Thank you also to our three appointments. I think it's really great to see the experience and strength that you guys bring back to the commissions that you've been on, so it's really neat to see that. I do want to highlight Consent Calendar number H. We approved the Wayne Road and Hunter Avenue modernization, which is part of the, and which as part of the plan includes the left turn signal that we have all been asking for, the residents have been asking for, and so I'm looking forward to that new and upgraded safety in that intersection. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that that was actually included in that. Thank you to the council for passing the resolution recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Cancer in general, I call it a thief. It steals a lot, whether you are a survivor or not. It steals a lot from people and families, and breast cancer in particular is something that does affect men and women. So I know the pink ribbons that were able to get passed out a little bit, hopefully as a reminder to get yourself checked, to be sure that it's, you know, that it's not you, you know, for any risk factors. And the awareness really includes all that education. So there is a website called nationalbreastcancer.org, and they have a lot of information and education so that people can know what their risk factors are, and obviously, when they should be talking with their doctors as well, because we can minimize those risk factors. I actually do know both, like I said, survivors as well as those who have not made it. October seems to be a good month for awareness. As we heard earlier, it is Anti-Bullying Month, but it is also Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and specifically, October 15th is Pregnant and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. As the March of Dimes website states, whether it is miscarriage, stillbirth, or other unhealthy or other health conditions, families who face the unthinkable loss need resources and a sense of community to find hope and sometimes answers. And sometimes, there are no answers. So to those, like me, who have experienced this loss and have no answers, I wish for you my heartfelt hope that you are working through the grief, which doesn't completely go away, no matter even with time. The March of Dimes website offers resources and support, and I know that talking about it and not bottling it up is also important for our mental health and for the grieving process. So with that, those are my, end of my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Pro Tem, Melissa Sampe.
All right. Thank you so much. People stay. This is great. Sometimes people just exit out. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski, for bringing forward Bibi and Marley. That was a great, a really great thing that we got back into. We previously honored students with the Compassionate Project. I know that that was something that all of us loved seeing, so I hope that we can have more acts of kindness and compassion that we can share with the community. I do want to also recognize Mr. Chappell, Mr. Durante, and Mr. Rayah for stepping up. It's really important to be involved. I know that there was a question about the Historical Commission from Ms. Filizetti, so perhaps maybe the mayor can stay after to talk to you about where your application's at. It hasn't come before, council, but I would just, you know, ask you to speak with the administration. The firefighters, I wanted to give a big congratulations and thank you for raising that money for MDA. I know that's a condition that, of course, is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, so thank you for your commitment and raising a lot of money. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so thank you, Councilwoman Bowman, for bringing that up, the resolution. I actually lost my grandma to breast cancer in '91. Mamograms weren't really as poignant at that point. You know, people were very loose with their guidelines, but I lost my grandma, and actually, today's her birthday. So mercer dearly, but I think back in the '90s, we didn't have the technology that we have now, so I really appreciate you bringing that forward. I am wearing the ribbons and the pink, and I walked in and people said, "Wow, that's real pink." So I definitely appreciate everyone who is supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know that Glenn did leave, but it was great to hear the update on the Wayne Road Bridge. I'm going to just continue to plug this. Our businesses on Wayne Road are struggling. Please, 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 visit them. You have a whole host of businesses that are six, eight, nine months behind on rent, so please visit them if you can. I know that it's something that maybe we think the bridge is closing, but many of them are at the brink of closing. I have spoken to several of them and said, "Hey, why don't we do a great party when the bridge opens? You know, do a cookout in the front. We'll call it backyard barbecue," or something, but, you know, I really feel like those businesses that are in dire straits, please support them. Marcos has a really great catering line that they just opened up, amazing ribs. You have a Thai house, you have Arabic shawarma house, you have the homestead kitchen. I know I'm missing a ton, Carlos Mexican, so there's so many great options. Please, if you can, think about it to support them. We'd hate to see them get back and just have to close. Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle, for, you didn't give yourself credit, but I want to give yourself a lot of credit. You talked about the Meteors football. Meteors had their homecoming. Unfortunately, they didn't have the lights for the homecoming, so Councilman Hornbuckle said, "I'll just pay for them." But eventually, he was able to secure some lights, and they were able to have their homecoming game at the field because the city didn't have lights at the time. So I know that they had a really great weekend, a homecoming weekend, so thank you for really taking that and taking charge of that. I'm just going to talk just really briefly about Westland Goodfellows. As mentioned at the last meeting, I have, this is my second year as the co-president. The 2025 season of Westland Goodfellows is underway. So applications will be available for pickup beginning on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. at Jefferson Barnes. This program is open for children in Westland. So applications are due back November 14th. There's no extensions, because we really have to have a deadline to start assigning people that want to adopt the kids or businesses that want to come in. So if you have any questions, you can direct message the Westland Goodfellows Facebook page. I will get back to you as soon as possible. You can direct message me on my personal council page, Melissa Sampe, or you can call us at 734-725-8798. Now, we are looking for individuals to adopt, so if you're interested in adopting a child for Christmas or a family for Christmas, maybe you have a business, please let me know. Or if you're interested in a corporate sponsorship, maybe you work for a company that wants to do something special at Christmas, I have sponsorship packets available and ready that I'd be happy to share with you. As Councilwoman Rakowski said, we do have a fundraiser coming up. It's here at Westland City Hall. The flyers are in the library, but, library, we're talking about libraries. Thank you, Mr. Chappell. I'll put them in the library, too. They're in the lobby. But the event is here at Westland City Hall, October 23rd, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. We are going to have so much fun. It's Music Bingo. It's going to be a great time. It's open to all ages. We're going to have 50/50, some basket raffles, music games. It's going to be a really great cause for supporting some kiddos. Last year, we helped 450 children get a Christmas. If we did not have Westland Goodfellows, those children would be struggling to find other programs. A lot of the programs don't exist anymore. It's a lot of work, but I know with the community and support, we can do it. So I really appreciate everyone and all of your support with the Goodfellows and helping the kiddos this Christmas. One more thing I wanted to thank our Westland firefighters for the Fire Prevention Week. You guys had a really great event that I was happy to stop by and hang out with the firefighters. I saw, you know, my colleagues here, so I know that was a really, a good time for people just to tour the fire station. And then, Council President, and I'm just going to let the council know that one of the conversations I've been having with the police chief is that we are looking to have a study session, possibly before the next meeting, to talk about using our American Rescue Funds for upgrades of our range. So our range is completely out of date. The building is 50 years old. We are actually using other facilities for our fire range, so it's going to save the city money, but it's also going to allow for training opportunities for our firefighters. So, council, I'm just going to ask to put you, you know, have that on your radar screen, and I know that the firefighters would greatly appreciate it. And I say "fire," I'm sorry. Police! Sorry, sorry, police, police.
Hopefully, they don't need the firefighters.
I know. Hopefully, you don't need the firefighters in that, but that's something that the council, I know I've spoken to a few of my colleagues, that we all support. So we're going to have a presentation, hopefully, before the next council meeting on the 20th. So I know our next meeting's on the 20th. I hope to see everyone in the community, be safe and kind with one another. We'll see you soon.
Okay. Thank you, Pro Tem Sampe. First off, happy anniversary, happy 29th anniversary. Hope you guys do something fun. I know it's not quite 30 yet, but you can still do something fun for 29. So Ms. Wilson, to address a couple of different things, it is a state law that sets the speed limits in neighborhoods. It's set at 25 for residential neighborhoods and 15 for mobile home communities, manufactured home communities. So Representative Wiegell and Representative Hersberg and State Senator Polhanke would be the ones to contact their offices to look at state law on that. Also, with regards to the trailer sitting on the street, I know I've been down, you know, on Julius a number of times, and if the trailer is continuously there and does not move, and he just leaves it there and parks it there, and there's no movement, you know, please let us know. We can get, you know, traffic enforcement out there to take a look at that, to, yep. And then, thanks for bringing up the speed humps again. No, I don't have an update on that one, so. Round of thank yous to give out. I would first and foremost like to thank Brian Schwazing and our Westland firefighters at Local 1279 for the great work that they did yet again this year on the MDA Fill the Boot Campaign. They did two drives this year, so they didn't just do one Fill the Boot drive, but they were out there twice in to raise $36,850 and beat a community like Grand Rapids, which is, you know, quite a bit larger in population and size than the city of Westland. It's really tremendous, so thank you to the firefighters, paramedics in Local 1279. And also, thank you to each and every one of you in the community who stopped by and dropped some money and helped to fill that boot or made a donation online in the name of the Westland firefighters on Local 1279. So thank you to all of our residents who donated and made this possible to beat out Grand Rapids. I want to thank our Community Engagement Director, Pascal Eze, and his team, Danny and Nicole Jones as well. I want to thank the mayor and the administration, and my colleagues on council who helped make our first-ever multicultural festival a really great one. It is going to be an event, I think, that's going to keep growing to be bigger and better here in the community. And I want to thank all of our residents who came out and all of the vendors and participants who shared with us your culture, your history, your background. We know that diversity, equity, and inclusion are what make, help make a community great, among many other things. So to everybody that came out for the multicultural festival, thank you very much for coming out, for everybody who participated in the parade and the event. Thank you for participating. And again, to Director Eze, his team, Danny, Nicole, the mayor, and my colleagues on council who helped in on planning this, thank you very much for a great breakfast, a great parade, and a great two-day multicultural event. We had, I want to thank our DPS crew, too, because they were out setting up our Westland police, our community police officers were out there as well. So thank you, everybody, for a great multicultural festival. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilman Hart and Councilman Rakowski, for bringing up the Veterans Holiday Meal Program. I know it's a big undertaking that is months into making it, isn't just make an announcement and turkey show up. There's a lot of work, a lot of money that has to go into that, so thank you for all the prep work that goes into that and getting that one ready for our veterans here in the Westland and Wayne communities. We certainly appreciate that. Want to thank our Westland Police Department for another great Blue Smoke event this year. I know, I think everybody on the council had the opportunity to go out there, the mayor as well. So thank you for a great, well, really, thank you to Sergeant Capodra on a great Blue Smoke event. If you don't know Jeff, and you've never been into Jeff's office, it's really just papers stacked and scattered as high as the, as far as the eye can see. I think people in the PD have tried to help him in years past, and he's just like, "Nah, forget about it. I'm going to do it." So if you ever hear him complaining, it is his fault, because people have asked to help before. We have a whole committee and team that was trying to set up with our community police officers, and they've tried to ask Jeff for help, but he didn't want to do it, so. But I want to thank Jeff and the Westland police for another great Blue Smoke event. But I want to thank Jeff and the Wesleyan police for another great Blue Smoke event, bigger and better than ever, and I was lucky enough to win two of the silent auctions this year. So I won a Detroit Lions poster with both the old Pontiac Silverdome on the top and Ford Field on the bottom, and then I won a really cool Detroit Red Wings poster showing the Wah Osgood fight from 1998. So that was really cool there as well. As was mentioned by the mayor and one of my colleagues, the NorWayne Community Citizens Council, which I'm fortunate enough to be a part of, is having the NorWayne Harvest Festival on Saturday, the 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Come on out for this, bring the whole family. There are pumpkins, there is face painting, there are animals that the kids can play around with, and you can dress them up and have them walk through Jefferson Barnes for some trick or treating as well. So make sure they come in costume as well to be a part of the trick or treating. And again, it's going to be on Saturday, the 18th, October 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a great event. It's totally free, even if you want to bring someone in your family that doesn't live in the Westland community, you don't have to live in NorWayne, you don't even have to live in Westland, come on out, bring the whole family. It's a great family fun. I want to thank our Wesleyan Fire Department, Chief Stamper, and all the members of Wesleyan Fire Department for a great open house at your brand-new fire station, number two. We had really incredible weather on Saturday. We had summertime weather in October, so I'm glad the weather cooperated. We had a lot of cool stuff there, including tours, as Ms. Dale mentioned, of the fire station. We had the Jaws of Life demonstration, and yeah, so thank you to the fire department, thank you to everybody that came out. This fire station was really a long time coming, as the mayor mentioned. This was through multiple administrations, Mayor Coleman and previous administrations as well, Mayor Londo, Mayor Wild. As the mayor mentioned, you know, this was a combination of American Rescue Plan funds that the council had allocated and money that he brought home when he was a state representative, along with State Senator Polhanke and State Representative Wiegela. And, you know, most of all, to get this project done, I want to thank our fire chief, Daryl Stamper, who is really the, the project manager, so to speak, in getting this project done from, from start to finish. So thank you, Chief Stamper, for the many, many, many months and almost, what, year and a half's worth of work to, to get this done. Some bumps and some headaches along the way, but it's turned out to be a very beautiful fire station and one that I think we as a city here are very proud of, and we hope that you all, as taxpayers and residents, it's ultimately your money. When we talk about state funds, when we talk about American Rescue Plan funds, we are talking about your tax dollars that went into building a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire station, too. So I hope that you have the chance to join us on Saturday. And if you didn't and you still, you don't want to pop in, you're able to do that, if you let us know ahead of time. Don't just show up there, but let us know ahead of time you do want to see it, and we can get you, you know, a tour if you really want. But it is ultimately your tax dollars that built a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire station. And then I think that's about all I have. Oh, no, did want to thank Commander Rokita and the folks at the Bova Post for another great and solemn POW MIA event. Thank you for including all of us on the council to be a part of that event. We really do appreciate your inclusion and really more so taking the time out to honor those that did not make it home and are still missing in action, and those who were prisoners of war and were held captive during the horrors of war. And with that, if anybody needs anything from me, you can always reach out to me at 734-890-2146 on my cellphone here, or you can find me at Councilman Mike McDermott on Facebook. And even though he's not here to say it, as Ray would always say, please treat each other with kindness and, most of all, respect. Is there a motion to adjourn?